Mayor Andrew, I'm just gonna put us live now.
Okay. All right, give another little while here.
I don't care. Oh, that was just the YouTube. So those folks who are joining us now, can you just make sure that you're muted, please? And keep your your video turned off until you're called to speak, please. Thank you. Mayor Andrew, it's 4:30 and I think we have all of council here. With regrets of Council Kale, so I think we are ready whenever you are.
Okay, thank you. And on that note, I will open the public hearing with a revised agenda. And just my opening remarks here and procedurals. It's a public hearing, read the land use bylaw number five, seven, two thousand and two amendment bylaw five, two, eight, two, zero, two, zero. This public hearing is being convened in order to consider and receive submissions relating to land use bylaw number fifty-seven, two thousand and two amendment bylaw number five, two, eight, twenty, twenty. Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by this proposed bylaw will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard, make representations, or to present written submissions, respecting the matters contained in the proposed bylaw. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. To maintain order during the public hearing and to ensure everyone has a reasonable opportunity to be heard, the following rules of procedure have been established. If you wish to address a public hearing, please ensure that you register your name on the speaker's list. You may add your name to the list at any time. If you are speaking from prepared remarks, please send a copy by email to the corporate officer. Please commence your remarks by stating your name and address. If you are speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, please identify the name of that person or organization. Each speaker's request to limit their remarks to no more than five minutes each time. Subject adding your name to the speaker's list again. You must limit your comments to the proposed bylaw and you must not obstruct the public hearing. I request that all speakers be respectful of others and ensure that your comments address a specific issue being considered. After everyone on the speaker's list has spoken once, speakers will be allowed supplementary presentations if they have added their name to the list again. You may not present a submission you have already made. Any person who wishes to present a written submission to council may do so and all written submissions must be received by council before the close of this hearing. Please observe these rules and if you have any concerns with the manner in which the public hearing is conducted, please direct your comments to the mayor. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. Those documents are available for review during this hearing via the hearing agenda. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaw is during the public hearing. Members of council are not permitted to receive further submissions regarding the proposed bylaw after the public hearing is closed. After the public hearing has concluded, council may without further notice make whatever decision it deems proper with respect to the bylaw that is the subject of this public hearing. Okay, thank you for that. And the purpose of the bylaw is the Bowen Island Municipal Council's considering bylaw number five, two, eight, twenty, twenty, to make a series of amendments, the land use bylaw number fifty-seven, two thousand and two. The proposed changes include additions, removals, amendments, and consolidation of various land use definitions, changes to setback exceptions, buildings and structures that can be built in required setbacks, changes to home occupation regulations for auto repair, and changes to the method to calculate building heights. And we have a presentation and I'll pass it on to Daniel Martin, manager of planning and development. Read the overview of proposed bylaw number five, two, eight, twenty, twenty. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just start my short presentation here.
Okay, thank you.
Does that show up okay?
Yep. Yes, thank you.
So thank you. So as the mayor said, we're here tonight for a public hearing for bylaw number five, twenty-eight. So as the mayor has read, it's a bylaw to make a series of changes to bylaw number five, number fifty-seven. So this bylaw was initiated by a council strategic priority in the island plan of twenty seventeen to look at a review of the land use bylaw. It was first presented to council the February third, twenty twenty committee of the whole, at which point the committee of all recommended that council direct staff prepare an amendment bylaw to make amendments to land use bylaw number fifty-seven as outlined in the staff report of January thirtieth of that year. The draft land use bylaw amendment was presented at the July twenty-seventh meeting of council of twenty twenty, at which point council referred the draft to the advisory planning commission into committee of the whole meeting. The committee of the whole met to discuss it in October of twenty-sixth of twenty twenty, at which point council directed the staff to present that draft land use bylaw to council for consideration of first reading. And council gave first reading to the bylaw on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. And at that point referred the bylaw to the islands trust and to the advisory planning commission in the public open house. May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, council gave second reading as amended to the bylaw and referred that bylaw to the public hearing, which is where we are tonight. In terms of responses of referrals, the islands trust replied to the referral and at their January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the executive committee resolved that the bylaw number five, twenty-eight is not contrary to or in variance with the island's trust policy statement. The advisory planning commission last considered this bylaw at their January twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting, at which point they supported the proposed bylaw. And I note here that the APC has considered, has discussed this bylaw at a number of earlier meetings going back to twenty eighteen. The public open house was held March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. By staff and one participant joined that open house to ask questions of staff regarding the proposed changes. Finally, comment received as of time of the writing, so as of four thirty today, we received seventy-three written comments on the bylaw. And in my presentation notes that as of July fifth, when this presentation was prepared, the focus of the comments have been on, one, on the process of the amendment by law itself, and second, on the proposed change to home occupation regulations for automobile repair.
Daniel, sorry to interrupt. It looks like your presentation is frozen on the first slide.
Yeah.
On the first slide. That's never happened to me before.
There you go.
What are you looking at right now?
Bylaw background.
Okay.
May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
That's current, though.
Is that you're seeing?
It's just the same. We can see.
Slide number eight.
Okay. Wait, would you like me to go back to the start or to continue from where we are?
Do you mind just going through those again, please?
Sure.
Thanks, Daniel. Sorry about that.
No, I apologize. Right. So this is showing the island plan twenty seventeen. So that the strategic priority of the review of the land use bylaw. And so then I'll go through these council motions. Are you still seeing that? Are you seeing the slide four?
Yeah, that's good.
All right. So first, first discussed by council, the February third, twenty twenty committee of the whole meeting. And where the committee of the whole recommended council direct staff to prepare an amendment bylaw. So that draft amendment bylaw was presented at the July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty council meeting, where it was referred to a committee of the whole meeting as well as the advisory planning commission. So that committee of the whole meeting October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, council directed staff to present the draft land use bylaw for consideration of first reading. And that presentation took place December fourteenth, twenty twenty, where council gave first reading to the proposed bylaw and referred it to the islands trust and the advisory planning commission in the public open house. And then on May twenty-fifth, council gave second reading to the bylaw and referred it to a public hearing. And in terms of referral responses, the islands trust responded that at their January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the executive committee resolved that the amendment bylaw is not contrary to or in variance with the island's trust policy statement. And the advisory planning commission, their January twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting, supported the proposed amendments to the land use bylaw. And I just note here further dates for the advisory planning commission has discussed the proposed changes. Public open house was held March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And then one participant joined to ask questions of staff regarding the proposed changes. And so as of time of of the writing, we've received seventy-three written comments on the proposed bylaw. And as I had said, the focus of the comments received up to July fifth have been on the process of the amendment bylaw itself and the proposed changes to the home occupation regulations for automobile repair. And so those changes to automobile repair would add the words underlined at the bottom to our home occupation regulation, such that a maximum of one motor vehicle media maintained on a property over the course of a calendar month. And so what staff have presented in this is should council proceed to third reading of the bylaw based on the feedback received, staff would prepare alternatives for this regulation. So the options for council would be to leave section three point one one unchanged, so as currently drafted in the bylaw, to amend section three point one one to remove restrictions on the hobby aspect of automobile repair. Or section three point one one, so leaving the current regulations in place for automobile repair as a home occupation or to amend that section to allow it as a hot automobile repair without the proposed restriction. So that brings me to the end of my presentation. I'll stop.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. And we'll move on to the public hearing submissions and input. And I'm going to pass it over to Hope Dallas, corporate officer, for some comments just before we get started. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. As the mayor already mentioned, the procedure for the hearing, just wanted to go over a few points. So we have several speakers on the list already for the call for first input, second input, and third. But at any time during the hearing, if you'd like to speak, you can send me an email or raise your hand. And when we get to the end of the list, we'll have a look and we can call you, call you then. And so you can speak up to three times for five minutes each time. And we ask that you do not repeat statements. And when you're done speaking, please mic, turn off your mic and your video. That would be greatly appreciated. So I'll call from the list for the call for input the first time. And so we have Brad Hawthorne. And if you could also state your name and address at the beginning of your comments would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hope. And this time I will call for public input. Both verbal and written. And back to you, Hope, just for the list. Thank you.
So first up, we have Brad Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, my name is Brad Hawthorne. Can you hear my audio? Okay.
Yes.
Good. Okay. Yeah, so I live at one, two, one, seven Adams Road. I've been here since around two thousand and three. My interest here is primarily for the hobby vehicle aspect of it, although I do also have concerns about the home occupation aspects. I'm hoping today to present you guys with a solution to a problem that's been identified by many people like myself on the island that feel that the bylaw unintentionally creates changes to our hobby effectively. I'll do state that, excuse me, I have no connection to either commercial repair business on the island. I may wave to them in the street, but I have no business or otherwise connection to those entities. So the the problem I see that we're trying to solve has to do with a lot of the language in the existing bylaw. And I won't repeat things I've already presented to my letter or letters, sorry. Although I will possibly paraphrase or just highlight them a little bit. Some of the things that I'm concerned about on the home occupation side have to do with lost opportunities for businesses that you may not be thinking about. These are things that have nothing to do with some of the environmental aspects that go along with waste oil, coolant, possible spills and that sort of things. And these are possible businesses such as upholstery in in classic cars, rewinding alternators and starters, installing car audio installation systems, sound deadening, auto glass, tire shop. There's already a private motorcycle repair shop on island for friends of the guy that runs it. It's not commercial. But these are all things that don't fall within what people normally think of as vehicle repair or dealing with oil and waste oil and those sorts of things. So that's one of the things that are in the OCP about business opportunities and trying to promote business and home-based business that you're probably not thinking about or haven't thought about. But the wording in the bylaw actually restricts these things depending on on its final form. And I think we can do better. I think we can do better with some of the environmental protections. Some of the things that are are in the proposed amendment don't actually address some of the operations in garages like mine. Oil-water separators seem to be a bit of a catch-all. That's the solution to the problem. But when you're working in a garage, there's no rainfall. There's no hose down. It doesn't do anything. But there's other issues that are not addressed in the bylaw, such as storage and handling of fluids, keeping them indoors, keeping them in sealed containers, not addressing the bylaw at all. So what I've proposed, and hopefully I'm not running out of time because I'm almost done, is that we can do better and we can rely on performance-based standards like the OCP says. So what I've done is I've obtained a word version of the the bylaw amendments. And with a couple of others, Derek Long and Tim Misco, we have reworded the bylaw for your presentation to provide to you. And I sent it earlier today. You probably haven't had a chance to to look at it and read it. I think what we've done on the on the one side, it shows that as hobbyists, we can provide you with wording that allows us to self-police ourselves. We're proposing proposing environmental controls that would not only cover people like myself, there are collectors that have garages, but just people that work in their driveways. And and what we proposed is completely reasonable and no one would object to it. It also addresses some of the things that fall through the cracks, like commercial mobile automotive repair. The bylaw is tied to buildings. And so anything that's not within a building, your your proposed amendment doesn't cover. I don't know if you know that. So some of the things we're proposing is we've we provided definitions for repair for motor vehicles, whether or not motorcycles or things like that are included. We've corrected inconsistent wording use. We've removed hobby from home occupation and concluded it in a separate section with our own regulations. We've separated the environmental requirements that are tied to the vehicle repair garage definition so that applies to other things as well. And we've added requirements, as I've mentioned, about storage and handling of fluids. We've also mentioned the poor definition of derelict vehicle. I have four of those in my garage right now, but you would not know from looking at them. And so there's a number of collectors on island that find that definition a little bit offensive when they have ill-conditioned vehicles. And so, oh, and and finally, parking requirements. The minimum six is, I think, inappropriate.
That's five minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome to sign up again. And next we have Anne Frank de Ferrier.
Good evening. Draft bylaw five, twenty-eight, twenty twenty. Housekeeping amendment to the land use bylaw have been discussed several times in twenty twenty. The support document is presented at the regular council meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty. This one hundred and ninety-two page long document printed double-sided is one point one centimeter thick. As the staff prepared the amendment by law, it took the time to point out that the changes proposed, I open quotation mark, are worthy of greater attention than available in the large housekeeping bylaw such as this, close quotation. As bylaw five hundred and twenty-eight, twenty comes to the second reading on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, some members of the public are bringing the attention to the wide encompassing changes to the original land use bylaw fifty-seven, twenty thousand, two. The housekeeping title is questioned and the term omnibus bill is strongly suggested. The second reading is passed and a public hearing is scheduled for today, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one. In the meantime, the public becomes more insistent and asks for a complete documentation of the changes. The red line complete amendment land use final fifty-seven, twenty oh, two is made available on June the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. We printed it and studied. The first noticeable thing is the very large amount of red line on the original land use bylaw. The text of land use bylaw fifty-seven, twenty oh, two is a hundred and seventy page long. Fifty-nine pages have no correction. When assigning the number one to either an entire paragraph, an entire sentence or lonely word, the grand total of corrections come to five hundred and forty-three on a hundred and eleven pages. This document is not only overwhelming in its overall size, but also in the magnitude of the planned corrections. It takes perseverance and stamina to keep tracking the changes suggested. So the question is, where is the rationale for all those changes? Nine working days before this public hearing, the track changes and staff comment to land use bylaw fifty-seven, twenty oh, two is finally made public while the omnipresence title of housekeeping is dropped. The same red line document is used and squished to the left with miniscule comments on the right. A strong magnifying glass would be needed to make sense of the whole document. And I am wondering whether anyone, let alone members of the council and members of the public have had time to take all that information in. So now we are present at this public hearing of the proposed changes to land use fifty-seven, twenty oh, two. I quote from the public notice that it, open quotation, includes addition, removal, amendment, and consolidation of various land use definition changes to setback exception, buildings and structures that can build in required setback changes to home occupancy regulation for auto repair changes to the method to calculate building height close. This long list of names is much longer than a few changes as once planned and suggested by the name housekeeping. In the light of the very large number of proposed changes, I'm questioning whether members of the council have actually been able to spend the time to immerse themselves in the various documents and come to a personal opinion. Following the example of the recent decision of this council, the perception that neither staff nor council members do actually take the time to respond to the demands of Bowen Island. Regardless, I advise the council to scrap bylaw five hundred and twenty-eight, twenty, twenty. Thank you for paying attention to my comments.
Thank you, I'm proud.
Next, we have Andre Cholat.
Andre, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And good afternoon. Okay, the land use bylaw.
Sorry, Andre, can you state your name and your address, please?
I'm so sorry. Andre Chola, fourteen, twenty-five, West Side Road, Bowen Island. Okay, the land use bylaw, Lub, is the most important document of the municipality controlling the development and management of all properties and everything that is being done on those properties. It is a complex and uneasy document to read and research given the amount of directives spread and interconnected in its hundred and eighty-five pages. Since written in two thousand and two, it was amended therefore modified fifty-eight times, twenty times in the last, in the past five years, for reasons we are mostly unaware of, as not presented for public hearing every time it happens. The Lub housekeeping amendment proposed here has been pushed to first and second reading without analysis and questioning of the number of changes considered. A total of two hundred and twenty amendments with little rationale. In this bylaw, an enormous amount of legal information is being dictated in six schedules, yet only schedule A is available for public comment. One must research the original document to be informed of the content of the other five. Schedule land use bylaw map in schedule B, comprehensive development tree, CD three zone map in schedule C, development guideline for the protection of the aquifer habitat in schedule D, design guidelines in a code in schedule E, tourist commercial accommodation development permit guideline in schedule F. Schedule A alone cover a hundred and sixty pages of legal information in seven parts. Seventeen pages of definition interpretation in part one, three pages of administration in part two, eleven pages of general regulation in part three, ninety-two pages of zone regulation in part four, eight pages of parking regulation in part five, eight pages of subdivision regulation in part six, nineteen pages of development permit guideline and expansion and exemption in part seven. Any such legal document would be required to be clear, precise, and accurate. It is not. As a lack of clear definition and interpretation is consistent throughout the document for multiple reasons. The proposed amendment of combining definition makes the situation even worse. The example of eliminating in with the transfer of definition to guest house illustrates the reality of the problem. There are seven forms of lodging on hospitality accommodation in in the bylaw. In, guest house, bed and breakfast, Airbnb not listed, commercial guest accommodation, residential guest accommodation, communal dining room, retreat center. They all have the same principle of guest paying accommodation in different setting and zoning location. The rational of eliminating in to be replaced by guest house does not resolve the ambiguity of that occupation. To be inclusive instead of exclusive, all guest accommodation would be in the category hospitality accommodation that includes tourist accommodation, visitors, stranded craft people with each specified specification provided. In characteristic, number one, in characteristic regulation zoning, two, guest house, same thing. Three, bed and breakfast, four, Airbnb, five, commercial guest accommodation, six, commercial dining room, seven, retreat center. Each one with their characteristic regulation and zoning that would help find what we want when we are looking for. A similar confusion is being created by every combining definition proposed by those amendments and by elimination of terms implied. One such item to be revisited in the rural context of Bowen Island is agriculture, which has taken precedence to any other land cultivation for no logical reason of fundamental meaning. The agricultural definition stated should be for hobby farming as agriculture instead of the farming activities only means extensive field cultivation as intensive agriculture, that is the industrial incentive of the general term. Domestic agriculture or home agriculture ties gardening to hobby farming. Gardening practiced by almost everyone on this island is also universally known as horticulture. The definition to be deleted of horticulture is the commercial definition of horticulture not representative of the general occupation known from time immemorial. Under the category of hobby farming would be the definition of one domestic agriculture that involves production of vegetables, fruit and berries, two, stable, skinned poultry, three, grape vine production, which is called viticulture and not vineyard. That is the intensive grape production for wine making. Four, it could be Christmas tree production called civic. Four, it could be Christmas tree production called civic culture.
Thank you, Andre. That's your five minutes.
Thank you.
Next we have Hugh Matthews.
Hello, Hugh.
Mayor Andrew and councillors, my name is Hugh Matthews, twelve nineteen Fairweather Road. And I'm here today in my capacity as a vice chair of the Fairweather Point Strata Council. Our strata was created in nineteen eighty and consists of eighteen bearland strata lots with a large common area north of Fairweather Road. In the letter I sent to you, which is included in the material for this public hearing, I requested on behalf of our strata that by law five twenty eight be amended so that the lot coverage formula for our strata lots be changed to the same formula as that for settlement residential zones, which was the zoning our strata had before the adoption of by law fifty seven in two thousand and two. This result, this request comes as a result of two of our owners having recently been required to obtain a development variance permit for construction, which they wish to carry out on their strata lot. One application was for a new house to replace the home on the strata lot, which had burned down. In two thousand and two, when by law fifty seven was adopted, the zoning for our strata lots was changed from settlement residential to rural residential one. As a consequence of this change, many of the houses within our strata became legally non-conforming. As a lot coverage formula for our one zone was significantly more restrictive than in the settlement residential zone. This change in zoning for our strata did not apply to various other areas on Bowen, which also had been zoned settlement residential under the previous zoning by law. And I understand that if our strata lots had not been rezoned, it would not have been necessary with respect to lot coverage issues for the two owners within our strata to have made the development variance permits applications I just mentioned. I would like to emphasize that the strata is not asking for a rezoning, but rather is asking for a zone variance whereby the lot coverage formula, which applies to them, would be changed to the same formula as that which would have applied to them had the zoning for our strata lots not been changed in two thousand and two from settlement residential. In my letter to you, I attached a certificate from the secretary of our strata council confirming that all eighteen owners within our strata have approved the strata council making this request. If you have any questions, I would be pleased to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Jennifer Burns.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm at one twenty, one two nine three West Side Road. I previously appeared before you on this topic on May twenty-fifth meeting, expressing my concerns about the size and complexity of this by law amendment. And I was concerned that given the size, scope, and complexity, that an average person like myself was not particularly familiar with these issues. Would find it challenging to understand the implications of all these changes. Initially, I think several versions ago, they were presented as minor or housekeeping and therefore just updating definitions or clarifying. But since then, what I can see is that a number of these proposed changes appear to have real and significant impacts. At the May twenty-fifth council meeting, staff were asked to post the track changes version and an explanation. And I appreciate that staff did that and there was a lot of explanations that were posted on June twenty eighth, which actually just left ten business days for the changes to be reviewed by the community and digested. From my perspective, this amendment's really too big and far reaching to still to fully understand. But from my own reading and attempts to parse them, I have several concerns. And I'll talk about two of them. One is the auto repair, which you heard about earlier, and artisan industry. So with respect to auto repair, I have absolutely nothing to do with auto repair at all, but my friends and neighbors often do. They fix their own cars, they fix their friends' cars, and they restore old vehicles as hobbies. And I think, and their perspective is that this by law amendment will significantly change that and their ability to do that. And some have talked about the need to sell their project cars. And so rather than changing what seems to work today, if the environment aspects are a concern, and I agree they should be, then perhaps we could adopt the regulations to ensure it's being done properly. And I think the previous speaker talked about that. I don't think limiting the number of vehicles that you can process will change the problem because frankly, even one vehicle repaired a month with improper controls could be damaging. Also, with respect to artisan industry to include the cottage industry definition and then get rid of cottage the cottage industry definition, I'm actually concerned about the impact of this change for our beauties rich. By changing the existing limited definition that they have today of retail sale of goods and items produced on site, day-to-day convenience goods, that's the actual quote in the by law. If by changing that instead to just say artisan industry, we're now actually allowing a whole new set of activities, which I don't think were contemplated. And I'm not sure the residents, if they haven't gone through and looked at all this, would be aware. As well, noise bylaws would not protect against this type of change as it excludes commercial activity. And artisan industry really is a lot more like light industry now that we've included the cottage and industry definition. And so I don't think that that was the original intent of that language. The history of that area and how that definition and why it was there was shared with me. And it seems like it was intended for a single purpose, for a single community, which never actually happened. And so I think before this type of change to their neighborhood is made, very intentional consultation must be held. Which brings me back to my original point in May, which was, I think staff have done a great job of advertising the public meeting today informing the community of the proposed update. But they're too big and too numerous, in my opinion, for a reasonable person to really understand all of the implication. And so I ask you, council, how many of you can say with absolute confidence you understand each of these hundreds of changes in their entirety and all the potential impacts and feel a hundred percent confident that there's no unintended consequences? And if you can't answer that with a hundred percent confidence, you must have this by law change broken down into smaller, more discrete parts to ensure that everybody fully understands them and that you and the community are fully informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And next we have Peter Williamson.
Peter, welcome.
Sorry, I read that wrong. Rosemary Knight, and she was all ready to go. Sorry, Rose.
I was all ready to go, and I thought I read it wrong. So thanks very much. So hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Rosemary Knight, seven ten Minnows Lane. So I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed amendment to the land use by law that would remove the current section seven point one. It's entitled Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area. The rationale given for this proposed removal is to correct a mismatch between what we have in the land use by law and what we have in our official community plan. Well, I feel there is another way to correct this mismatch that I believe is in line with the intent of the OCP and with the will and the commitment of this community. So I'd first like to thank Daniel Martin, who's been very helpful responding to my emails in my fact finding and sought legal counsel to clarify a few issues. This is a complicated issue. So in order to protect CRC as a development permit area, there are two requirements laid out in the Local Government Act. We need, first of all, the CRC designated as a development permit area in the OCP. Then we need specific guidelines for the development permit laid out either in the OCP or the LUB. Well, if we go back to nineteen ninety-six, in that OCP, we can find the Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area included, along with permit guidelines. So everything was in place at that point to protect CRC as a development permit area. In two thousand and two, the land use by law copied the language from the OCP to provide the guidelines in the land use by law. So at that time, everything was still in place, still okay for protecting CRC as a development permit area. The current problem is what happened in the OCP revision in twenty eleven, or the current problem is due to what happened then. The CRC development permit area is not found in the twenty eleven OCP. And that's what gives us this current situation, this mismatch. We have guidelines in the LUB, but no designation in the OCP. Daniel noted in an email to me that twenty eleven OCP, fair enough, predates his time here. So he doesn't know the reasoning behind its removal. Well, I was living on Bowen at the time, so can explain what happened. And I feel this clarifies the current situation and suggests how we should correct it. There was never an intent to repeal the CRC development permit area. In twenty eleven, that OCP, CRC was lumped in with other environmentally sensitive areas. And this is shown in schedule B one, referred to as environmentally sensitive development permit areas. The plan was to include guidelines in the LUB for these environmentally sensitive area development permits. Unfortunately, the council at the time ran out of time and did not update the LUB with the required environmentally sensitive areas development permit guidelines. So the result causing this current mismatch, CRC was left stranded in the OCP, pulled out of its standalone designation, lumped in with the environmentally sensitive areas for which no development permit guidelines exist. Knowing the history, it's very clear what the intent of the OCP is on this issue, what the intent of council was, and what the intent of this island has consistently been. CRC is to be protected as a development permit area. We have the guidelines in the LUB but lost, I would argue through a mistake, lack of attention to detail, the development permit area designation that we need for CRC in the OCP. So my suggestion is not to remove the section in the LUB, but to put the designation in the OCP. I urge council to correct this mistake made in twenty eleven. And possible solution, take schedule B one, and I laid this out in a letter I submitted, you take schedule B one, environmentally sensitive development permit areas, show as an insert, schedule B one B with the area of CRC labeled as the Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area. So this should achieve what is needed under the Local Government Act, correcting the mismatch that currently exists. So if for some reason there is a flaw with this simple fix, I urge council to take whatever steps are required to ensure that we have in place language in the OCP and the LUB that acknowledges the commitment that has long existed on this island to protect CRC as an involvement permit area. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Peter Williamson is next.
Okay, Peter, try again.
Hey, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Peter Williamson. I live at one four seven one Tunstall Boulevard, Bowen Island. My concern, I share the concerns really raised by all the previous speakers that this the changes proposed go far beyond being mere housekeeping and that also there are too many and they are too complex to consider in a short period of time. I want to raise concerns about the removal of the category of domestic agriculture as a principal land use in many of the zones that are in the land use by law. In fact, there are about nine zones. I have sent you a letter and those are listed. So a little bit of background, I mean, I know that most of council understand this, but basically a principal use means on a lot is something you can do without having to do anything else, so to speak. So most lots have as a principal use dwelling and also domestic agriculture. And the proposal is to remove domestic agriculture from all of the lots and make it an accessory use. So in other words, in other words, to be able to do domestic agriculture, you will have to establish a principal use, which in most cases will be dwelling. So I have a lot, there's no dwelling on it, and I conduct domestic agriculture there. So what I do now would technically become illegal. Now, I'm sure that council has no intention to tell us that we can't grow vegetables on our lots. Nevertheless, that is effectively what's happening. And but it's more than growing vegetables because in, once one has the, if one, if domestic agriculture is an accepted principal use, it also allows you to build things like a shed and a greenhouse. You know, beneath a certain size, you don't need a permit. Above a certain size, of course, you would need a building permit to do that. But nevertheless, you can do that without having established a dwelling there. And I think this is a very significant change. So I know it's not just me who has a lot that has no house on and where we do actually conduct domestic agriculture. And I emphasize that this is domestic agriculture. This is just growing things for our own personal consumption. There's a lot, you know, it's a complicated thing and I'm not going to go into all of it, but I do urge you to read very carefully the letter I've sent. I want to draw attention though quickly to the OCP, which places a high importance on agriculture in Bowen Island. And in particular, policy two zero nine of the OCP, which says amongst other things that domestic agriculture is acceptable on any property. So if it is removed as a principal use, it is no longer acceptable on my property or the other, or other people's properties where they have not established a house. So I don't think this is an insignificant change, and I don't think that it's in keeping with the requirements of the OCP. I don't see any good reason for having this change. There are domestic agriculture, in other words, growing food for yourself, vegetables, tomatoes, you know, potatoes and things is not offensive, it causes no harm to anybody. And if there is any harm done by maybe the use of chemicals or making noise, those things can be dealt with through the bylaws and regulations. One of the reasons I understand from the planner, who's been very helpful to me, Daniel, is that once one establishes a principal use, so which might be domestic agriculture, it allows other accessory uses to be, to go ahead. And that's a reason for not wanting domestic agriculture as a principal use on any lots. I can understand why he would do that, that may be a problem, but that's easily sorted by just saying that to the other users, secondary users on a lot, which you might not want to be legitimized by establishing domestic agriculture, might be, for example, something like a sawmill, portable sawmill. So on my lot, technically, I suppose, having established domestic agriculture there, I could now, well, I don't think I'm allowed a portable sawmill, but other people in other zones may do that. So all you need to do is say that a portable sawmill is not permitted without having established a dwelling as a principal use. And you can do that in all the cases where you don't want to trigger a secondary use by establishing domestic agriculture. I just want to see, I'm looking my notes here. I think I'm going to leave it at that and hope that you consider this issue carefully and that understand that this change is not insignificant and would affect a good many landowners of Bowen Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Next we have Richard with the speed.
Richard, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thanks for letting me speak again in opposition to by law number five to eight. I'm Richard Befosbit and I'm property owner at seventeen ninety-five Emily Lane, currently residing in Nynmo. So I'm speaking in opposition to by law number five to eight. Last year, we remember that still in the summer, council changed the OCP and designated the entire island for temporary use permits. This process took roughly six months from start to end and led to decisions that have left at least one neighborhood on the island disappointed and divided over a side area. This year, this summer, the municipality asks the community to participate in the LUB number five to eight by law process, a much more comprehensive project that started some three years ago. It was nicknamed housekeeping amendment of the land use by law. Yes, nicknamed housekeeping because the full name of the by law is Bowen Island Municipality Land Use Bylaw Number fifty-seven comma two oh oh two comma amendment by law number five to eight comma twenty twenty. That is a very long name for our tiny municipality, but actually quite appropriate because the by law that needs studying up is almost twenty years old. That's what we learned from the frequently asked question section of BIM's website. We also learn We also learn that a lot of the old regulations apparently don't make sense in 2021. So council is considering this bylaw to remove things that are no longer useful, update and change things to reflect the current day and add new things that were not thought of in 2002. The proposed amendments are all encompassing. They touch on every section and every topic of the LEB and some of these changes will impact some lives and livelihoods on Bowen. Some will impact all on Bowen, but all of these proposed edits, corrections, amendments, modifications and adaptations need to make sense in 2021 and far beyond to justify such an extensive exercise. And most importantly, these changes need to make sense to all people of Bowen Island. Otherwise, what's the point? But here rests one of the major problems inherent to omnibus bills like bylaw number five to eight. It takes research, background information, expert explanations and substantial time to make sense of it all. And this is why the people of Bowen Island have asked for a comprehensive information package over the last month and have finally received a version of the bylaw text with smart changes and comments that accompany the over 200 changes proposed for the LEB. However, this important piece of the LEB puzzle was only made available as late as 28th of June 2021. It's less than two full weeks for review by the public, not sufficient time for the public to work through the 220 comments provided by staff in an attempt to explain the reasons for these changes. Some of these comments are easy checks, but others are quite complex and have far reaching implications, not all of which are easily identified. In general, the provided comments fall short of providing a solid rationale. The comments stay mainly on the surface and do not elaborate the possible side effects of the proposed amendments. Package is simply too big and there's not enough time to appraise all proposed changes and the wider impact of these changes. For this reason, they have been repeatedly caused by the public to abandon this major project and break it down into a number of updates by topic, by issue. Even the FAQ section of BIM's website suggests that this amendment bylaw could be split into multiple bylaws. The excuse provided for not doing it is that this would lengthen the overall project time, which in turn would cause, and I quote, "the processing time for license and permit approvals to get longer and longer." To me, this is an unacceptable position. If the process for comprehensive LEB review cannot be developed, including an appropriate level of consultation with fair and proper inclusion of the public because of in-house capacity constraints, then a project of this scope should not be undertaken at all until sufficient resources have been allocated. Or alternatively, drip feed the project issue by issue and work with the public towards a solution that makes sense for all. And I said it before and I say it again, for the sake of common sense, abandon the bylaw number five to a process and review the LEB bit by bit. That's my story and I stick to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Next, we have Leslie Dawn.
Good early evening and I am a property owner at 1795 Emily Lane. And I'm opposing the proposed deletion of the entire section 7.1 Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area. The staff comment provided to explain this deletion claims that bylaw number five to eight removes the section for clarity and because Bowen's current official community plan does not designate the Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area. However, section 7.1 provides extensive preservation and protection guidelines for the CRC, which by all means is an environmental sensitive area. The section contains sensible setback restrictions from water courses, steep slope regulations for building and septic fields, wetland and water course protection measures, erosion control measures and other environmental mitigation procedures, a reasonable framework presumably designed to protect and preserve the unique biodiversity of Cape Roger Curtis, designed by municipal staff and endorsed by former councils in an official document, the current LUB. It strikes me as odd that this entire section is wiped out rather than fixing the designation of the Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area upstream in the OCP. The environment is very important to Bowen Island and it would only be in keeping with the directive policies of the island's trust to protect the Cape's diverse ecosystems, including forests, freshwater runs and wetlands, riparian zones and marine and coastal environments. There are certainly many ways to connect the dots of related information in the OCPs of the past. However, citing a technicality to cut out this entire section ignores the importance of this section 7.1 for Cape Roger Curtis and for all of Bowen. Instead, let's value our connection to nature and protect and preserve our environmentally sensitive areas. When it comes to the Cape, we are well advised to tread carefully. To quote Vandana Shiva, what is to live to be alive? What is to live well to be well? What is knowledge? What is intelligence? What is ecology? What is economy? What is freedom? What is democracy? What is our future? Thanks.
Thank you, Leslie.
And next we have Margaret Underhill.
Welcome, Margaret.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Margaret Underhill. I live at 1405 West Side Road. I would like to address the issue of definitions in the proposed amended land use bylaw. There are some 13 additions, 17 deletions and 36 changes proposed for definitions in the interest of streamlining the land use bylaw. Even with all of these additions, deletions and changes, there are still some questions regarding the general category of definitions. There are still a number of permitted uses that remain undefined, among them church, school, stable, ecological reserve, recycling depot and compost facility. Well, I doubt there's much confusion over what a church is. The other examples could benefit from being defined in the LUB. The current definition of daycare is proposed to be amended in a way that the word being defined is not actually used in the definition. There's a number of other definitions in the land use bylaw that have the same problem, but no amendments are being proposed to fix the problem. For example, building inspector, council, lot line, lot area, recreation, training and meeting center and subdivision. A number of definitions are proposed to be combined with other definitions. Cottage industry slash artisan industry, guest house slash inn, indoor entertainment facility slash indoor recreation facility, et cetera. Definitions should be very specific, based on historical understanding and clearly worded so that there cannot be multiple interpretations. The combination of definitions on the whole does not contribute to clarity as too much as being jammed into such combo definitions. The combining of indoor entertainment facility and indoor recreation facility is one example of trying to jam too many unrelated activities into one bundle. As someone who spent their entire working life in the performing arts, lumping sports and arts into one category is ridiculous. And even from the probability, even probability from the view of the sports types as well. If the definition as amended still needs to include the words quote and recreational uses unquote, this is a clear indication that it makes no sense to try and combine two such different types of activities. Also, on a minor grammatical note, the last sentence should read and may include refreshment facility. The definition public community facility, which is defined as meaning a public venue, including public libraries, museums, art galleries, theaters and other arts and cultural venues, appears to overlap significantly with indoor entertainment facility. Is this not confusing? As the definition of an indoor entertainment facility does not clarify that refers only to privately owned and operated facilities. Medical clinic, the amended definition, is defined as use providing for the care of sick or injured. I have numerous questions and concerns about this amended wording. Does this mean that healthy people cannot use the services of a dentist, doctor, physiotherapist, laboratory services, et cetera? How many sick or injured patients does the dentist see in an average day? You don't need to be sick or injured to go for a dental cleaning and checkup or get a filling or crown. This amended definition completely negates the concept of wellness and preventative healthcare. Practices on Bowen, which embraces philosophy include the Bowen Wellness Center and Bowen Island Integrated Health. Bowen also has a huge number of registered massage therapists per capita and a large percentage of their practices focus on people maintaining their health, not the sick and injured. Also, is a pregnant woman sick or injured? She will need regular doctor visits, ultrasounds, possibly lab tests, but apparently that will no longer be possible on Bowen. But next is a light manufacturing definition is proposed to be added to the LUB and was in the original presentation from July 27, 2020 with no explanation for the reason. A very similar described use is currently permitted only in zone CD22, Community Lands Lot One. Bylaw number 528 replaces that use with a light manufacturing permitted use and definition. As this is the only zone where this definition is applicable and the type of use is already permitted in that zone, why is a new definition necessary? If BIM is going to the trouble of creating a new definition, is the municipality contemplating allowing this use in other zones on Bowen Island? Will the public be consulted in advance, particularly the residents of other zones? Question regarding bed and breakfast, the definition in the LUB does not allow limited kitchen facilities, a term which is specifically defined in the LUB. However, 3.34.9 home occupations indicates that bed and breakfast use allows limited kitchen facilities. Which one's correct? And finally, the general services definition includes post office, would a post office not be a government office? The government office definition includes related public services and activities. My next point is regarding consistency with the OCP glossary of terms. The work to date staff report dated January 30. Okay, I'll carry it over.
Okay, thanks, Margaret.
Next, we have Kirsten Degner.
Kirsten. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Is it, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, very well, thank you.
Okay, perfect. I'm, my name is Kirsten Degner. I live at 1237 Adams Road. My husband Jeff and I are the owners of House Sound Automotive Limited, which is a mobile home automotive repair shop. To date, we operate under this, under the bylaw that's looking to be amended. And the way we operate is by servicing one vehicle at a time on our property. Because this is the way we operate, we call ourselves mobile as people cannot come to our home and leave their vehicles for the day as that would go against these regulations. So we spend a lot of our day driving, picking up and dropping off, servicing the vehicle and returning it. It's been a really wonderful service to Bowen Island, one that we're very proud of. And we understand that if this bylaw amendment were to go through that changes from one vehicle allowed on property at a time for repair at any given time to one vehicle allowed on the property for repair per calendar month, that we would be considered grandfathered or non-conforming. And we could continue operating the way that we are operating, which does certainly give us some peace of mind because we've worked very hard for this company. What we're worried about is exactly how that non-conforming or grandfathered actually looks. Further conversations with the planning department and with bylaw, it's become clear that we're not necessarily as safe as we're led to believe. And you know, if there's anything that we've learned from COVID, it is that life as we know it can change in an instant. We feel that home occupations such as ours that were created during a time of need should be given the support they deserve to grow, not have more obstacles put in their path. So if we ever find ourselves in a situation where our doors will need to be closed for longer than a six month period, we will then be governed under these, this new amendment. And as I'm sure you can imagine, being only allowed to fix one car per month, we just, we would be shut down. That just couldn't happen. And there's many things that could arise. I mean, unfortunately, even in our small community, just this year alone, three families have lost their homes to fire. There's GoFundMes popping up for illnesses that people are struggling with and injuries. This type of work has a very, comes with a very large, large risk factor where, you know, if my husband is injured and he's off work for longer than a six month period, then we will once again be in a position where we will be governed under this new bylaw and we could lose everything. If we ever need to move, if we outgrow our home, we cannot bring our business with us because our business is tied to this address. So we will once again be governed under this new bylaw. And so that's where our concerns are, is that we feel that we have demonstrated that this type of home occupation is not only doable, but that it's, it's been wonderful to the community. It's, it's had a very low impact on the neighborhood, very low impact environmentally because like I said before, we can't have cars sitting on our land. So they come, they get fixed, they go back. They're not sitting here leaking, rusting, nothing like that. And because there has never been any infringements, any infractions, there's been zero safety concerns from both bylaw and the fire hall with all of our inspections. We, we don't understand why it is being amended to this degree. When there's been, when we, you know, our neighborhood and our neighbors fully support us and the community fully supports us. So that was really all I wanted to say. I know you've gotten a lot of letters and I don't want to repeat what's happening in those letters. I just wanted you to hear from the family that runs this business. And you know, we've been on Bowen now for, well, myself for almost 30 years and there's three generations of us that live here. And it truly is a family run business that we really care about and that our community cares about. And we just want to be as protected as we possibly can. And so that's why we are asking that the one vehicle for maintenance per month be removed from this amendment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kirsten.
And next we have Bruce Baldwin.
Okay, welcome, Bruce. Are you there?
I saw him earlier.
Okay, let's go on.
One of the next Gareth James.
Okay, James, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for taking the time and your attention to hear us out. So my name is Gareth James and I live at 1225 Adams Road and I have five comments. First is that there's a significant amount of concern, which I guess you will know from the, from some of the letters, among members of the community about the motivation for the amendments on auto repair under the home occupation section. So I would like to ask the council to clarify for the community whether the decision to narrow the permissions for auto repair was driven by complaints and if so, how existing bylaws didn't already adequately address them. Point two, since this amendment affects only one single business on the island, I think the community would be interested to know whether the municipality consulted with that business to determine limits that would be practical while still discouraging abuse of the provision. And with the province's unemployment rate only recently dipping under seven percent and we're still hemorrhaging full-time jobs, I think there is general support amongst all of us for actively supporting a small local business. Point three, the municipalities address the need.
It's fixed.
Sorry, shall I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
Thanks. The municipalities address the need to balance governing objectives. 177 and 178 in the official community plan is the criteria that framed the way it thought about the need for this amendment. Since House Sound Automotive appears as a positive addition to the island under objective 177, that is adding much needed on-island capacity, is presumably in respect to 178, which seeks to minimize disruptive impacts to neighbors and on the natural environment, that House Sound Automotive is seen to be a negative addition to the community. So as a near neighbor, I'm speaking to say that I would rate the occasional noise that comes from this business as roughly equivalent to the noise that comes from other neighbors using tools for minor renovations or home hobbies or that comes from the regular ferry traffic convoy on Adams Road every hour or from the pit at the top of the Buchanan Road. I'm not aware of any complaints from anyone in the neighborhood. As a near neighbor, I would also like to vouch for the good standing of the Degner family as well, lights, generous and respectful members of our little neighborhood here. So I'd like to ask the council to clarify if there were any local complaints that demanded action in respect of objective one seven eight. And if not, to please better explain what causes driving this amendment proposal. Point four, one of the consequences of the amendment proposal is that it's already, that it has drawn attention to the apparently unreasonable nature of the provision as it is already written. And the problems caused by addressing hobbyist restoration under a home occupation provision and I'll kind of, I'll, uh, um, won't say any more about this because this was addressed at some length earlier by somebody else. Um, and point five, from the invi- from the information currently available to me, it would thus seem that if there is a need to amend the bylaw, it is more in need of loosening to conform to actually existing longstanding and accepted practices than it requires further restricting. In any respect, I think there is a need for more information and transparency in explaining the motivation behind this proposed change in order to address the serious concerns that have been raised and the conflict that has unfortunately arisen within our community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Gareth. Hope, how did you make out there with, uh?
Uh, good, I think Bruce has joined us, so Bruce Baldwin.
Can you hear me now?
Got you now.
Okay, well, there are a lot of comments about a lot of aspects of, of the proposed bylaw, but I really want to only deal with one.
Can you say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bruce Baldwin, twelve forty-one Adams Road. Um, I'm gonna limit my comments to a peculiar specific change of one category, namely automotive repair. Brad Hawthorne has written sensible objections to changes for both hobbyist and home-based vehicle repair, and I concur. I see no reason to change the existing performance-based standards to a virtual blanket prohibition on vehicle repair based on theoretical environmental hazards. A mechanism to address that issue already exists. It seems that this is targeting one business which though grandfathered is put in jeopardy because of the proposed change. If the proposed changes have been made partly in response to complaints from neighbors, I'm at a loss to know where those complaints might have originated. I am the neighbor to the business in question, share a driveway and live not fifty feet from the shop. I have no complaint, the neighbor has done everything requested by the municipality and runs a tidy, clean and reasonably quiet operation. My neighbor started this business in the midst of the pandemic when, like many others, he was laid off from work in town. He identified a need for more options for vehicle repairs and filled it. This has undoubtedly saved many ferry trips to and from town. Environmentally, it's a good thing. We should be encouraging Bowen-based business activity, not throwing up roadblocks. Everyone working from home on Bowen is not involved in intellectual pursuits. Some are hands-on and need the same opportunity to work from home. I believe this aspect of the bylaw needs second consideration. And I, I think it should be left as is without changes, I should, think it should be dropped. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Is that it, Hope, for round one?
That's, uh, that concludes round one.
Okay, thank you. So I will call for a second time for, for any further submissions and to be quite clear, if somebody wanted to make a, before we start on the second submissions by somebody who's already submitted, if somebody wants to make a submission at this time, they're welcome to do it, first submission. And then we'll go to the, uh, the people that have a second submission. So speak up now or forever hold your peace there. As I hear nothing, I will go to.
Can you repeat what you just said about first submission, second submission, that was not clear to me, can you just repeat it, please, thank you.
Okay, Frank, it's just that, I know you have some more to add to it, I'm just asking if there's anybody out there that would like to make a first submission. And if there aren't any, we'll go to, uh, the second submissions. And I don't hear anybody, so, uh, Hope, can you, uh, have you got a list of people that would like to make a second submission?
Yes, Anne Frank de Ferrier is first.
Okay, Anne, away you go.
My name is Anne Frank de Ferrier and I live at fourteen twenty-five West Side Road. Uh, draft bylaw five hundred and twenty-eight, twenty twenty. I have a problem with the term agriculture. Some fifteen years ago, I was at the round table in the gym at Bix when I first heard the word agriculture associated with Bowen Island. I could not help but burst out of laughter. Why, asked my table partners. I explained that I just had the vision of a combine on the ferry. One would have to find an extremely small combine to fit on the ferry. And coming on off the ferry, the driver would ask to be shown the field to be harvested. After all, Bowen Island's nickname is the Rock, is it not? It has a land area of forty-nine point ninety-four square kilometers with Mount Gardner towering at seven hundred and forty-seven meters above sea level. The island is classified in a bioclimatic zone of our temperate rainforest zone. And because of its steep topography, Bowen Island only has small pockets of arable land. Yes, Bowen Island has enough room for paddocks for some thirty horses or more. But I do not see the hay fields to support those horses. All the hay is trucked in from the Fraser Valley. Not so long ago, the Bowen Island Brewery had to leave the island as the ferry fares got the most of the enterprise. All the ingredients but the water had to be ferried over, barley and all the rest. So I do not see agriculture on Bowen Island. On the other hand, and until the fifties, every town in Europe had a belt of food gardens providing produce to the vendors of those charming outdoor markets, which are the results of a strong tradition of an intensive food gardening. Agriculture on Bowen Island, question mark. What a misleading concept for our beloved Rock. Since the word agriculture implies the extensive cultivation of fields and we have no fields, so to speak, on Bowen Island, there is really no future for agriculture as such on Bowen Island. But on the other hand, there is a garden tradition that is alive and well. So please make the effort of exchanging the word agriculture with intensive food gardening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments.
Thank you, Anne Frank.
Next we have Andre Shamart.
Andre, go ahead.
Andre, fourteen twenty-five West Side Road, Bowen Island. I will be short because I'm just completing what I had written, but what I would, I would want to say without reading first is that I'm very interested to hear most people who claim, who realize, like we do, that this bylaw amendment's, uh, work is extremely difficult to take given the complexity of this, uh, of this, uh, document. And given the fact that we have never been prepared in a rational way to get into the, e- every part of it to understand what was being done. So to be, to be suddenly brought in front of the fact that everything is being changed and we don't know why, we don't understand exactly the reasoning behind it. And we think that, uh, by reading it, it does not make sense, most of the time it does not make sense, there is so much contradiction into that document, so many things which, uh, in a, in a literary way, do not make any sense at all, that it is difficult to take it. So to complete, I'm just going to say that the example that I provided, and there would be easy to provide many more examples uh, out of that, of the document itself. The example provided here are only reflecting the frustration one has to go through this legal document that is not representative of who we are and what we are doing. As presented, the bylaw number five twenty-eight, twenty twenty should not go to a third reading without an overall review and further public involvement. It would be better to postpone it until you come back from holiday, that we have the time to, uh, go through it, uh, in a calm way and we can decide then what is to be done, but uh, not, not before that, I, I would be very, very regrettable to see that, uh, third read- third reading done and passed. That would be really almost insulting. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
And next we have Margaret Underhill.
Margaret, go ahead.
Thank you again, whoops. Oh, well, I'm not going to be seen, it looks like, um, oh, here I am. Uh, fourteen oh five West Side Road. Um, first of all, I'd just like to express my strong support and agreement with the submissions, um, regarding retaining seven point one Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area and Brad Hawthorne and his thoughtful analysis of the land use by law. I hope that's all seriously considered by council. Couple of specific zoning issues. Um, Artisan Square, over the years, it's evolved and developed into a welcoming and friendly place where we can find many of the services we require. Yet, taking a quick tour of Artisan Square, one notices the Bowen Island Wellness Center, a medical clinic under the proposed amended definition, a gym, an indoor entertainment facility under the proposed amended definition, a garden center attached to a florist shop and a veterinary clinic. While the garden center could be considered an adjunct to the florist shop, under the existing L U B zoning, none of a medical clinic, indoor entertainment facility or a veterinary clinic are listed as permitted uses. If the goal of the Lub amendment bylaw is to update the current L U B, why on earth would these uses not be added to the proposed amendment L U B as for permitted uses for Artisan Square? I've asked the planner about this issue and his answer included the statement, but overall reexamining uses throughout our C D zones was outside of the scope of the project. And in contrast, the F A Q on the website states that council is considering this bylaw to do, among other things, um, update and change things to reflect the current day. The Artisan Square question would certainly fit into the category of updating and changing things to reflect the current day. Um, domestic agriculture, to start with, let's be clear that domestic agriculture means gardening, vegetables, flowers, perennials, shrubs, trees, berry bushes, gardening, pure and simple. Not large-scale agriculture, not a hobby farm producing food crops for sale to others, just gardening. I was initially somewhat perplexed when I saw the change in domestic agriculture from permitted principal use to an accessory use. And the planner's annotation still did not provide me with sufficient insight into this. Now that I've talked to other people, I understand the im- impact of this change. O C P policy two oh nine states that domestic agriculture is acceptable on any property and makes no distinction between a property with a house and a property without a house. Given that staff and council have been considering land use definitions with respect to their consistency with the O C P, this is one definition that seems to have slipped through the cracks. Is council clear on the impact of this proposed amendment and the inconsistency with O C P policy two, two oh nine? A further, further ironic complication with a permitted use of domestic agriculture is that two zones on Bowen Island do not permit it at all under the current L U B, C D six Cowan Point and C D sixteen Seniors Precinct. How could it be possible that BIM could prohibit gardening in any particular zone or zones on Bowen? Are the residents of Cowan Point aware that they are not allowed to plant and maintain gardens under the current land use provisions? Um, in researching land use and zoning bylaws in Gibson, Sea Sheldon, West Van, neither Gibson's nor West Van makes any reference to or definitions of or permission for gardening. Sea Shell classifies gardening as horticulture and specifically permits it in all zones. Our land use bylaw should be made clear that gardening is permitted on all properties in Bowen, consistent with O C P policy two oh nine. To paraphrase a previous prime minister, the municipality has no place in the gardens of Bowen Island. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Margaret.
Rosemary.
Yeah, go ahead, Hope. Sorry. Sorry, who?
Sorry, is it me?
Rosemary.
Okay, great.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much, so again, Rosemary Knight, seven ten minutes late. So I'm first going to finish my thoughts related to the removal of section seven point one in the L U B. A mistake has been found, and I'm glad it's been found, through this housekeeping exercise, but the way forward, I just want to make the point that C R C is an area that's unique and rare in terms of its ecological biodiversity. We need C R C designated in the O C P as a development permit area and we need guidelines as currently exist in the L U B. So thanks for finding the mistake we currently have and I would love us to move forward expeditiously to correct that mistake that's being found. So I'd also like to comment before closing on two other issues, uh, one is the automobile repair. It caught my attention as I was first going through the changes because I felt that there was a lack of clarification on what exactly the problem is that we're trying to solve. And I think that would help in thinking through how the amendment needs to be worded. I presumed it was environmental concerns, but then I found the amendment puzzling because changing the bylaw to read one vehicle a month is not going to address. Caught my attention as I was first going through the. Whoops, someone's, oh, I playback, okay. So I have to ask, when it comes to the automobile repair, why exactly is this the amendment? What is the problem we're trying to solve here and how is it being solved? So having heard what Brad Hawthorne said, I urge council to carefully be considered what has been submitted by Brad. So my last comment, I have to agree with the concerns that have been raised about this process, given the number and scope of changes. I started looking at this about two months ago and the link to the information package on the website led to about fifteen staff reports to scroll through, never quite knowing what was discussed when. And then without track changes, I had two monitors, one with the old L U B, the other with the new L U B, going through, trying to figure out what's changed. So to have the track changes and then the rationale provided, the rationale was really critical and a huge thanks to Daniel for his work on that. But to have it available on June twenty-eighth, this is really way too late. Daniel should have been given time to work on this, protected from everything else that's going on down there, but months ago. It is inconceivable that you can expect the public to sort through something like this in two weeks. And I'm wondering whether Daniel has had any time to sleep in the last two weeks, given the repeated reference I've heard to questions sent to Daniel. So I have to ask council, with your strong commitment to public engagement and public consultation, why continue to move forward with this process? Thank you all very much and I will not sign.
Thank you, Rosemary, okay. Oh.
That's all we have on the list for, um, the second call.
Okay, so I will ask, uh, third and final time for any further submissions.
I would like to speak.
Okay, who's that?
That's Anne.
We have someone on, nope, we, sorry, we have somebody on the list to speak a third time and, and Anne, you can go after. Um, Margaret Underhill is first.
Excuse me, I also have sent you an email, Hope, I would like to speak at least one more time, so second or third call doesn't really matter.
Okay, do we have, do we have anybody out there that hasn't spoken? This is the third and final submission, so if you haven't spoken and you want to say something, now is the time to do it. Okay.
I see a new face. Are you John Carlson, did you want to speak?
Uh, so.
Well, thank you very much, I, I would just mention a couple of.
Hang on, sorry, sorry, I can't give you permission, I was just trying to, uh, draw the mayor's attention to the fact that there might be a new person, so my apologies, over to you, Gary, for the.
Okay, thank you, too, and John, could you, that's fine, you can go ahead and speak, just give us your name and address.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, yes, John.
My apologies, John Carlson, thirty-five twelve Marine Avenue, Belkara, British Columbia.
Okay.
Well, I, I certainly don't want to intrude on your meeting and I certainly don't want to intrude on your overall focus within your, within your municipality. Uh, I'm on the, I was on the advisory board for the Village of Belkara for a little over a year, uh, I'm the national president for the National Association of Automobile Clubs of Canada. We're the largest organization in North America, we touch about four hundred and fifty thousand. It's been brought to my attention by several of your residents that this automobile bylaw may have a serious impact on the collector car community within your area and that was my main concern. I emailed you all and gave you my views and my comment was at the time that I really thought that this was a, a very hastily put together grouping of amendments or, or proposals and I had suggested that perhaps it would be wise to form a committee within your own group suggesting that perhaps a couple of members of council, that three members of your local commit- community sit down and draft up a proposal that would be acceptable to all parties concerned and that way it would avoid a lot of confusion and it would make it easy for all of you. Typically, what happens in small municipalities like the one that I live in myself is that legislation is drafted with the greatest of intent, but it but the long reaching effects of it drastically impose restrictions on people that it wasn't meant to impose restrictions on. So I was very concerned that there were situations where hobbyists weren't really allowed to work on their vehicles or they would be infringed upon if they did work on their vehicles and then the ramifications that went along with that. So I certainly don't want to step in from an outsider from outside of your community. But you have residents that I'll use Derek Long as an example and several other major, major, major players that live on your island that are very concerned that their ability to continue to act in a, you know, from a hobbyist point of view is going to be infringed upon.
Okay. Is that it, John?
Yes, it is. I I'd certainly be open to any questions. I my concern is that if you put this in, if you put this in the form of a committee and and the committee was only to deal specifically with this one component of your by law, you'd come back with a with a very strong piece of legislation that would serve all of the interests of Bowen Island as opposed to only concerning a few small isolated situations. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for giving me the time tonight.
Thank you, John. I appreciate your comments. Okay, back to Hope. Who did we have there?
Margaret Underhill. Margaret Underhill first.
Oh, Margaret. Okay, go ahead.
Here I am again, and I'm still at fourteen oh five West Side Road. To wrap up, the entire land use by law amendment process began as part of the island plan twenty eighteen, as Daniel mentioned, as a street strategic priority. Municipal municipal staff committees and council involved in this process for almost three years with constantly changed and updated reports and PowerPoint presentations during this process. Yet, the great unwashed of Bowen Island is expected to absorb three years of material in three weeks from the date of track changes text publication or less, two weeks since the annotated version. Even in the annotated version, the implications and impact of many changes have not been adequately explained to the public. And if they were explained to council, it was not in any of the staff reports. In spite of submissions from the public requesting that an in person public hearing be held due to the health restrictions on organized indoor gatherings, this public hearing is being held by Zoom. While Zoom meetings have been an essential means of conducting business during COVID nineteen, they are not conducive to a true public dialogue and discussion. The public has also suggested an alternative to an immediate in person public hearing. Postpone the public hearing until September. Right now, kids are out of school and Bowen residents are starting to enjoy their newfound freedom to leave the island for vacation. In September, council and the public will be refreshed and refocused, and there will be a greater ability for all to participate. The streamlining of the L U B has not been achieved. As an exercise in minutia, we researched the land use by law of Gibson, Sea Shell and West Van. Gibson says ninety seven definitions in its land use by law. Sea Shell has a hundred and twenty six definitions and West Vancouver has a hundred and fifty nine. Bowen Island, if all proposed amendments were approved, will have one hundred and fifty one definitions in its land use by law, a net reduction of four definitions from what currently exists. The residents of Bowen Island have not been given complete information on the proposed land use amendment by law in a timely manner in order for each taxpayer and residents to be able to carefully consider all the proposed changes individually and collectively. Some of the proposals are legitimately housekeeping, but many more have far reaching implications that have signed into law will affect Bowen Island residents for years to come. It would make far more sense to complete this process properly and slowly than to conclude the process badly and quickly. Finally, can any one of mayor, council or staff provide a compelling reason for this entire process not to be temporarily adjourned until a time when we can all meet together in person as permitted by B C's public health authorities to have a traditional Bowen public hearing on these very important issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Hope.
And next we have Anne Frank.
I'm Frank.
My third presentation does not have a written document and so I will be a little. It might be a little bit confused in my presentation. So I feel uncomfortable about the process of the public hearing and I think to me it is flawed. The reason is that councillors are not required to be present during the public hearing. The staff that prepared by law five twenty 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 will gather up the public's comment, make a summary and table and present the comments, this document as a base to the third and final reading to the councillors that were present or not present. The flaw I see is that the staff that prepared this, the by law five hundred and twenty eight will not be in a position to present an unbiased summary of the public comment. And the councillor should be able to make up their own assessment of by law five twenty eight on their own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have Richard with us.
Okay, Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, hello again. Richard Whipple, seventeen ninety five, Emily Lane. And again, I'm speaking in opposition to by law number five to eight and this time in particular to the proposed obliteration of section seven point one Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area. The staff comment number D M two one three explains this elimination by referencing oversights in the O C P and concludes for this reason that the entire section seven point one is obsolete. In the languages of mathematics and logic, this conclusion would be or could be categorized as a false conclusion or more accurately still as a valid but false conclusion because the information provided is incorrect. But the conclusion is just one of many possible one of many possible alternatives, especially if additional information was not considered unavailable or withheld at the time. So to illustrate that point a little bit and also because it's late in the afternoon, maybe I want to share an anecdote on the topic of artificial intelligence. Let's just imagine artificial intelligence is challenged with solving all of humanity's problems. And it might possibly conclude that killing all people would be a viable solution. This also is a false conclusion. In this example, artificial intelligence considers only limited information to draw this valid but false conclusion. In this example, relevant additional information, for example, the all encompassing values of humankind are submitted. Now back to by law number five to eight and the proposed cancellation of section seven point one. In this case, relevant additional information, for example, the all encompassing values and the overall spirit of the O C P to preserve and protect our island and all environmentally sensitive areas were seemingly omitted. So this mistake has been talked about by many speakers that went before me and I just want to conclude here basically that I agree with their call to keep section seven point one in the land use by law and fix a problem upstream in the O C P as required. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. And Hope, I think Brad Hawthorne is on the list again.
No, I don't believe so.
He just sent me a little note. Brad, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I wasn't sure if that got to Hope. I would like to speak at this time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Am I good?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Again, Brad Hawthorne, one two one seven Adams Road. I just want to talk briefly about literal meanings and interpretations of of legal documents, including bylaws. And what I do in my job as a professional engineer is very similar to what council is doing right now. And when we write things like legal contracts in the case for construction or what council is doing for writing bylaws, which becomes a legal document, we have ideas about what we want the words to mean. But we don't always get that right. And once the documents are adopted, they become legal documents. And we have to leave behind what we thought we wanted to get into the words. And at that point, the only thing that matters is what the legal and established definitions of the words and what they mean. And so when when council goes back and has a look at some of the the language, I would encourage you to to forget about what you thought you were putting in the by law. Get a fresh mind and and read it with fresh eyes. Because everybody has to have the understanding, the same understanding and the same interpretation. Otherwise, bylaws aren't clear and they won't stand up. And effectively, at the end of the day, any lawyer or any judge will tell you whatever you intended to put in there. If you didn't get it right, it it doesn't matter. It's it's what it literally means once it's signed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Brett. All right, Hope. Anybody else? That's it.
Have any requests? No.
All right, so I have called for a third and final time for any further submissions. And at this point in time, if there are no further public input and council does not wish to have a further staff report. Then the recommendation is that all written and verbal submissions regarding land use by law number fifty seven two thousand and two amendment by law number five to eight twenty twenty up to and including July twelfth, twenty twenty one be received and that the public hearing be adjourned. Second on that, please, or further discussion? So Alan, what's your?
I would like to. I'm going to speak against that. So I'd like to make the alternative one when you're finished with this one, if you get a second.
All right.
I'll second your for your motion.
Okay, thank you, Alison. Any further discussion on that one?
Yeah, oh, can I?
Well, wait a minute. Further discussion on the on that, on this one, or do you want to deal with them?
Well, I'm opposed and can I speak to it?
Sure.
Okay, I would just like to thank everybody for all the input. This is the first time that we're really getting a significant amount of engagement from the public that I can from what I can remember and from what staff have said through this process for this by law. And I think it's significant input, not not just the amount, but because some of it is so specific. So a few that I've got down here are the Cape Roger Curtis Development Permit Area, the Vehicle Repair Agriculture Fairweather, and there are others that have emerged. And I think we have had COVID has stopped us from engaging with the community the way we normally do. And you know, I don't want to delay it. However, I do want to do it well and I want to respect the input from the community that we've been giving and the given and the work that people have gone into it. So I'll be voting opposed to the the one you've just got moved and seconded and I'll be if it fails, I'll I'll move the second recommendation here on the last page of our agenda, that staff report back to the council on the results of this public hearing. And that the public hearing be adjourned to a future date. So we're still in it and can talk about it with people in the community. And and so I was maybe October the twelfth is our next as or the September twenty seventh is our first council meeting back. But that's what I'll propose if if your motion doesn't pass because I I I just don't. I would like to dig into this a little more deeply and and these significant and specific concerns have been brought to our attention and I think we should respect it.
I appreciate that. Alison?
Um, I guess I am missing. I don't know which one of us is misunderstanding what the first recognition means. What I was gathering from that is that this would close the public hearing. And then we would have a report from staff on the comments and recommendations as to how we deal with the comments and the requests and so forth. Not that we wouldn't be able to get further information from staff.
At third reading, yeah.
And the changes could be made between second and third reading. And if we decided to make some substantial changes that changed use of density, then we would have to go back to a new public hearing. So.
Counselor Morris, that's that's correct. So staff will write a report from this event and then has the opportunity to make amendments to the the proposed land use by law.
Okay, thank you. To Ellen?
Thank you. That helps clarify it because I I was reading the second one and it it sounded like we would just be moving on automatically. But of course, there's third reading. The I think I was confused by the fact that after a public hearing, we can't talk about it with members of the community. So does that get lifted after third year reading so that we can talk to people again? No. So this is the end of public input then. If if the motion that's moved and seconded passes.
Correct.
One more clarification question. My also understanding is if we wanted more understanding of a comment somebody had made, we could ask staff to please contact that person and make further clarification. So it's just that staff can have conversations we as as council can't. And that's sort of the fairness issue so that everybody knows what everybody else is saying. So if there was, if we wanted further information, we could ask staff to go and get it for.
And and can we? This is a question, I guess, for Liam. And can we ask questions of staff as as councillors?
Yes, and especially when it comes back for third reading or if it comes back for third reading. That it there would be further discussion at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm satisfied.
And may I ask, if a member of the public had further and input that they wanted to provide, they could still do so to staff at this point?
Any any additional submissions received after the close of public hearing will be forwarded to staff.
Thank you. So that door remains open.
Correct.
The the door between staff and council stays open and the door between staff and the public stays open?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, I'll ask a question.
Just just a extra clarification. Just so what about between the public and council? That will no longer be. Can there be communications that way? No.
No.
All right, thanks.
Ask a question. All in favor? Aye. And that seems like we got everybody. Thank you. Okay, that's unanimous. And so that is passed and on that, the public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you, every member of the public for your input. We really appreciate it and we will take it into consideration.